I hate poetry. Please don't take it personally.
That's a different thing.
May I have your attention? We'll get started. I want to welcome everyone to the March 13th work session of the Portsmouth Planning Board. This evening, we're going to review and discuss sections of the draft revised zoning ordinance, including overall structure, overlay districts, and definitions. But prior to getting started, maybe I'll take a moment to introduce everybody. Across the way from me in the blue shirt is City Attorney Robert Sullivan. To his right, my left, is Donald Coker, Planning Board Member. John Rice, Planning Board Member. Paige Roberts, Planning Board Member. Lucy Tillman of the Planning Department of the City. David Holden, Director of Planning for the City. M.L. Gafford, Planning Board Member. Cindy Hayden, Deputy City Manager.
Tony.
Tony Caviallo, Planning Board Member. Richard Hopley, Building Inspector for the City. And to my right is Mr. Taner, our consultant. And with that, we'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Taner, who's going to lead us through revised zoning ordinance.
Thank you. What I've handed out are three separate stapled documents. First is a general table contents followed by a detailed table of contents, and we'll talk about the structure of the proposed revisions to the zoning ordinance. The next thing is Article Six, which is all of the overlay districts. And the third piece is Article Fifteen, which are all the definitions. And tonight is really just an introduction to the, basically your first time to start looking at what the revised ordinance is going to look like. I think that it'd be useful to really, to start with the overview, looking at the outline and getting a sense of how everything is being organized here. Then when we get to Article Six, that is a kind of a discrete piece with those districts that are overlay districts, the floodplain, historic, downtown overlay, Osprey Landing, and airport overlay districts. So we can talk about those as separate pieces. And then the last piece has got all the, and also looking at Article Six will help you see how the structure of the ordinance plays out, the way we've used fonts to pull out defined terms, and the way we use the numbering to structure the ordinance. And then the last piece is the definition section, and that's a lot of detail, but you'll see in there a number of changes. And I don't expect to, because you're just getting it for the first time tonight, I don't expect you to be going through all of, you know, expecting to go through in detail line by line on this. I think it's really better to use this as an overview approach, and then we'll come back to it in future meetings. And we'll have probably four or five additional meetings over the course of the spring to talk about this. We're trying to schedule those out right now. So with that, let's just turn to the table of contents. The first page is basically the overview structure of the ordinance. And you see that we've moved some of the administrative stuff, it used to be in the back, up to the front, because that's really where you start looking to see how you get permits. So this, that's the part of, you know, who administers the ordinance, what kind of permits do you need, if you're non-conforming use or structure or lot, what, whether you're exempt. And then the definitions, which were in the front, are now moved to the back, and it's really like a glossary. It's a much larger definition section, so if we had it at the front, it would be, it's almost 20 pages of definitions. So if we had had it at the front, it would be, you'd be a long time getting to meet at the ordinance. So turning the page, what we have, and not all, all of these sections are in draft form, but they're not all ready to show you yet, so that's why we're showing you only a few sections. But this, but in general, the structure is pretty, pretty well-defined. So the first article is, as the article is now, gives the title, the purpose, and the authority. You'll note under purpose that we have a specific line item for sustainability objectives. It's something that we've added. That's directly based on the master plan. And under authority, what we've done is we've pulled together the various authority references. In the current ordinance, you'll come to one section, maybe the historic section, and it'll reference a particular section of the revised statutes. And in this case, we've pulled all the pieces together, so there's one place where all of the authorizing legislation is referenced. And then we're, we're looking at a, sort of a general, easy-to-use user guide, that's not fleshed out yet, but basically, it's a way to look at how the, how you, how the person who's not familiar with it, who's not a regular developer, would come in and find out how to, how to get a permit. Then Article Two is, it's basically what there is right now toward the end of the ordinance, is the enforcement, the administration and enforcement section, who the enforcement officers are, who the code officers are, and so forth, and how you, how the zoning board of adjustment gets involved in variances and special exceptions. I expect that we may move some of the, or add some document, some documentation or provisions here regarding the planning board and conditional use permits and so forth, because that would be a similar type of thing, how, what the process is. Then we have a brief section on non-conforming uses, structures, and lots, not very much changed from your existing ordinance. Then we have an Article Four, and this is probably the most difficult part of the ordinance to write, is doing this table of use regulations and trying to coordinate all the different uses from all the different districts, because there are actually some conflicts in, or not conflicts, I would say inconsistencies, in the way uses are named and regulated in different districts. I think there are two different definitions for hospital, for example, one in one, one dis, set of districts, maybe business districts, and one somewhere else. So we're trying to go through that and just simplify the table as much as possible and get rid of those, those inconsistencies. So there, so there aren't any arguments about what terms mean and what things are allowed and not allowed. And it is, it is a fairly complex thing to get that all together. Article Five is, it's kind of a, it's almost a catch-all section. It's all the things that are exceptions to or additions to the use table. So there are special setback requirements for some things, special hours of operation for some things, some, some additional landscaping requirements and screening requirements. And then there are those fun things like sexually-oriented businesses, which almost, which usually rates its section to itself, but we've kind of put it in the supplemental use regulations, and telecommunications facilities, cell towers. We need to put something in there and add that to it. That's basically, that's, that section is really a, as I say, is a catch-all, and what we've done on the use table is have a separate column where we're going to refer to sections in here. So when you look at a use, if there's something special that applies to it, you'll be referred to the section of the supplemental use regulations. Please interrupt me any time if I'm not being clear, if you think that we're going too fast on this. Yeah, Tony?
So just noticed under Table Use Regulations is a thing, Personal Services, Item Eight. Is that a new one?
It's, it's a classification. It would be things like, you know, dry cleaners and, it's just, it's just a subcategorizing some of the uses.
Is that a current naming of some services?
I don't know. Is it a current naming? I can, I can tell you. I don't think we have that kind of, actually, you know, in the current organ, in the current table, I can answer that clearly, in the current table, there are no subcategories, so everything is just listed in a continuous list.
I just went to the definition, and I didn't see it there.
Right. So, so what is, it's a major heading, and then under it would be individual things. So that, so the, under residential uses, there may be 10 different categories for residential uses, and then Personal Services would be half a dozen different types of personal services, perhaps. It's just, it's just meant to kind of break it out so you, so you can look in the table of contents and look and figure out where to find something.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, the overlay and special districts, these are, these are the, as I say, these are the ones that kind of overlap your regular zoning districts, and we'll go into detail on that, so we don't need to talk about that very much. But as I said, there's the floodplain district, the historic district, those are the two really big ones. And then the smaller ones are the downtown overlay district, which you adopted a couple of years ago, the Osprey Landing Overlay District, which is currently called the Haroners Village slash Office Research Overlay District. And, and we're, we're, I'll tell you about how we're changing that, how we're proposing change that. We're basically taking it down from several pages down to probably less than a full page. And then there's the Airport Approach Overlay District, which has been an interesting struggle to figure out, and it's existing in your ordinance right now, but it's probably never used, or you probably, you probably never see it. So anyway, we'll look at that briefly. Then Article Seven are the dimensional intensity requirements, and it is, at this point, very much the way it is in your current ordinance, we're trying to try, again, like the use table, try to consolidate those and make them a little bit easier to follow. But in general, they're pretty good. The environmental protection standards in Article Eight, we're taking a good look at the wetlands protection area. We have a placeholder for riparian corridors, the corridors along, along rivers and streams, but we don't have anything actually put in there yet. And we're, we're pulling together the earth products and removal, which is in your existing ordinance, and making some small revisions on that. I would say that there are, we're taking a good look at the wetlands regulations, because there are some issues that are related to wetlands in some of the older, well, throughout the, throughout the city, actually. But trying to clarify what requires a conditional use permit, what doesn't require, trying to get rid of some of the ambiguities that lead to court cases.
Rick?
Yes?
Riparian?
Riparian is the, going along the side of a river.
Okay.
And we haven't written it yet.
I went to business school.
But you're a wetland kind of guy, don't you?
I ain't never heard riparian before. That's a very...
On the river.
You can sit in the riverbank and be riparian. The ripper.
There you go. That's a hurricane.
It is.
Was thinking of saying it as an explanation.
Huh. Did you just put that together, or you knew?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
We have the site development standards, and this is an area where we've been moving things to some degree back and forth between the zoning and the site plan review regulations. And we think we've got it pretty stable now, since you've pinned down the site plan review regulations. And so we just need to, to clarify this. Under the off-street parking, one of the areas that we will be, or two of the areas we'll be looking at a lot, are, one is the ratios, the off-street parking ratios that are required for different uses. And the other is the downtown, the central business district, looking at different ways to look at that, the current process of a fee that exempts you from certain amounts of parking and so forth. We're looking at that a little bit more closely. We've also changed the off-street loading requirements to kind of make a distinction between the downtown area and other areas, because there's, it's much more difficult and to do the off-street loading in the central business district, and there's all, and there's more ability to do shared, basically, use the right-of-way or parking areas for that. And outdoor lighting was one of the areas that, that kind of moved over to site plan review, and now a lot of it's moved back into zoning. But you've seen it, you saw it all in an earlier draft of site plan review, so, so you won't be surprised when you see it back in zoning. Signs, we have not done much with. So that's an area that we need to do more work with. Article 11, yes, I'm sorry.
Is Section 10 dot 950 where you would, if we were to include LEED certification requirements?
Oh, LEED? No. No, actually, I don't think that's, that, that actually is where, we talked sometime back about form-based zoning and other design, design, sort of aesthetic architectural design stuff, and that's where this would go. And we have a draft that we haven't put in here yet, and it hasn't been reviewed. In terms of LEED standards for buildings, that's a good question. I would think that might, it could go under environmental protection standards, or it could go under performance standards. I mean, it's, it's something we don't have a placeholder for right now, but it's, if that's something that...
I'm not saying that, I mean, actually, I read the stuff that you sent, Cindy sent around, and I'm not saying that I think everything, well, I'm likely to say, should be LEED certified. But I want to make sure we have a placeholder if we decide that we want to recommend that, and if it's not LEED, it could be LIKE LEED, like some places have.
Well, now, one of the things, I mean, that, to a certain extent, that's an area that, that somehow gets into building code issues, really. I mean, it's, it's, it's not so much, I mean, it could be, it could be zoning to a certain extent, but you have, it's, it's kind of one of those overlap areas. In terms of the site development, with the low-impact development and so forth, and we talked about some of that in the site plan review section, that, that clearly is a zoning-related thing. I'd have to think more about what goes into zoning and what goes into building.
Yeah, we've talked about it a lot internally, and I mean, a lot of it is kind of driven by the building code, and a lot of it's already in the building code. And what's not in the building code, we've incorporated quite a bit of in the site review standards. So, I mean, we should think about that, where to include a placeholder for the future, but I don't know if we want to head down the road too much, you know, LEED requirement in the zoning ordinance at this point.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that particularly, but I, I, I found very compelling this notion that municipalities are requiring green building.
Not too many are.
No, I know. But, okay, so it's a handful, and it's, it may be unpopular, and there may have to be a large education component before we do anything, but I think as a planning board, if what we're supposed to be doing is planning, and in the context of reading the stuff that you handed us, I understand it's, it's building code, but it's also zoning, or at least that's how it's come across in those communities, as I read it.
Chakovial.
I'm ready to move more along in the LEED idea than probably the staff is at this point, and I understand their hesitancy, not wanting to be the first ones. I mean, there are a handful, but not wanting to be in the beginning and bear the brunt of any mistakes. But LEED is, is a lot, is a lot up to it, and it doesn't have to be LEED, or it could be a LIKE LEED thing, and, but it comes down to, and I think this is a city role that it should do, and not the building, and not the building code, because it has to do with health of the residents, health of the people inside the buildings downtown, the, the quality of the building, and energy use. The big thing in LEED is energy use, and we have, I think we have, as a city, has a responsibility to demand higher energy efficiency from our, our residents and our, and our tenants, so to speak, you know, simple things like white roofs. I, I see that being, that, stuff like that should be inside, I think, this ordinance. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I just would like to say that I agree. I guess the only thing that they haven't mentioned is, in case Rick doesn't have the green building report by the Rockingham Planning Commission, one of the points that they make is, it seems to me, is, is kind, as M.L. was saying, basically, that then a number of these communities, the building inspector actually isn't that involved with enforcement or sort of with the procedure. Obviously, that, in some cases, that's partly because they have a separate staff person or sort of structure in which that operates, but, you know, it's just interesting, sort of, the different ways that it plays out here. So, I, you know, I feel like we definitely need to put something in there, LEED, like some kind of requirement, even if it's just for municipal, and try to begin to figure out some aggressive education.
Can I get a clarification? Maybe I misunderstood something. Are you saying, when you say building code, are you referring to the International Building Code adopted by the state, or a local building code?
Well, the city adopts, the, the, the state adopts the International Building Code, and the city adopts it with amendments, so the city adds its own amendments to it.
Are you talking about those amendments, or maybe...
Well, yeah. Well, that's what I was suggesting, it might be related to that, yeah.
Well, we're, I mean, I think you'll find that in the, in the current edition of the model building codes, which bring into that fold the International Energy Code, there's a lot of data out there already to provide more efficient building design. It's not, it may not be all-encompassing as the LEED process is, because LEEDs gets into far more than just the building. But what Rick is saying is that much of the, and you mentioned, Tony, that energy efficiency in terms of mechanical equipment, that's all driven by either a combination of the mechanical code and/or the International Energy Code. So the tools are probably there now, by and large.
One, one more thing I'd, to say, there's also a LEED dash NR.
There's a bunch of LEEDs.
No, but I'm saying, this is, LEED dash NR is neighborhood something. I can't remember. But it's a, it's a, it's a site-based, rather than building-based, and it's in a pilot program right now, it hasn't been officially adopted. But that's, that's kind of the next stage, and there are a number of communities across the country that are going through this pilot program right now to see how it works. The, the way, the way LEED works is, it works by a scorecard, and you have to get a certain number of points. And so the LEED NR program gives points for reusing existing buildings rather than building new buildings, having sites that connect to other, to nearby sites, rather than having, having to get out on the street system.
The current, the current LEED does that.
But this is for, this is the, this is the, this is not the building base, this is actually the, the, the site plan-based, which, which hasn't been officially adopted yet. It's, it's been in a pilot program for about two years, I think. And so that, that is something that would more easily fit into zoning. But again, the, the idea of a LEED, the, the difficulty, I think all the concepts that are in LEED are, are good concepts. The difficulty, I think, about adopting LEED into a zoning ordinance is that it is a scorecard-based thing, so you have to add up a number of points and fit them in, and it's different than, it would, it would be a different way of looking at zoning, I think, than we look at it right now, saying, yes, you, you either are allowed or you're not allowed. Under LEED, that's not the case. You could be allowed, you might be allowed, you might not be allowed.
I think LEED is too cumbersome, I agree, for zoning, and that's not what I would, I would suggest. I would say something like it, though, something where, and, and it can be simple things. We can take baby steps. For me, it's the, you know, I don't understand why a new building does not have a white roof, and say, what do they, they publish like 10 to 15 percent in energy costs, but just by having a white roof. I don't understand why that's not a requirement in our zoning ordinance.
Well, Tony, you know, one way we, we tried to get at that was in the site review regs, having them early on in the process, think about this whole issue of what sort of LEED-type components they're going to include in their buildings and in their site design. And, you know, the thinking is that rather than making it mandatory right out of the box, which I have a feeling a lot of people would come out to city council who actually adopts the zoning ordinance and say, you make that mandatory, it's a bad idea, whereas if you kind of phase it in and get people used to the idea of, tell us what LEED components you're incorporating, I think that the more savvy businesses certainly will start to incorporate those that they see make sense. I mean, I don't know that you want to have a mandatory in your zoning ordinance, everybody has to do LEED.
That's what I was just saying, I think.
Right. Then we're in agreement.
Well, at the point, something else.
Then I misunderstood. All right, let's find something else.
I, I think we did, I mean, we were very conscientious when we put together, or we, y'all and me a little bit, put together the site review regulations to be very clear about that, and we, we actually bumped it up in the purpose clause and sort of underscored it. But I, I think it is appropriate to have some sort of reference. Now, that may be, it may be just that sustainability piece in the beginning, I don't know, but I think it's important to emphasize that here. And I think that there is a, I'm going to sound like a businessperson, a marketing element to this that I think we can't overlook, which is that the more Portsmouth puts itself out there as fostering an environmentally sound building and zoning policy, I think the better we look in the community, so long as we're not hobbling all development, and as long as we're applying it fairly. So I think there's an ancillary benefit. So I, I would like to wear green.
I, as I read that paper that Cindy sent out, it struck me, and I think it was Austin, Texas, and it was about a month ago, I read it, went through about 15 years of kind of educating, and then they finally made it mandatory, and it struck me, I said, are we going to spend 15 years and then make it mandatory when there's no more building lots left and the city's totally developed? I mean, when it first started, nobody understood it. Now, there's 15 or 20 years of history, so I think, I would rather see us be a little more aggressive in promoting the idea while there's still a chance, rather than spend a generation. I'll be dead before 15 years go by. Mr. Coker?
However, having said that, when the city is built out, there will be rebuilding. There'll be taking buildings down, there'll be, assuming the HTC lets them, and, and, and replacing the buildings. So, but getting back to Tony's question about...
That still does not obviate the fact that 15 new buildings will probably be built in the next 15 years.
Well, that's called incrementalism, is, you know, it's, why, why go for the whole thing when you can just get a little bit at a time and wind up in the same place?
A little more aggressive. Well, Mr. Holden, I think, had a comment.
I think Donald's still going.
Well, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask Tony about his white building, his white roof idea, because one of the things that, that is, as good an idea as it is, what is the cost of a white roof versus a standard, you know, black? I don't know, I'm not in the construction business, but it seems to me that we need to be very cognizant of these requirements that we put on building developments that will drive up the cost of doing business in this city, which, which could, as, as nice as it is to market ourselves and everything else, could make it very difficult for people to, to build buildings. And as I used to tell my son when he was growing up, everything's connected, Clark. You know, it's all connected, so we have expensive development, we, anyway, it's all connected. So I, I just, I'm concerned about doing all of these LEEDs things and these, and the cost involved.
Most of the studies are suggesting, though, that any capital cost you put up front is more than offset by energy savings in the future, so they actually pay for themselves and conserve energy.
If that were true, every developer would be doing it.
No, no, no. The developer puts out the capital, and the owner or the renter saves the money, so the developer doesn't have any incentive, really, to do it.
I'm equating developer and owner, but that's okay.
And they're often not.
Yeah.
Right.
More than not.
Right. Most often, they're not.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden, you've been waiting for a while.
I was just trying, going to try to build on what I thought we had sort of set out to do, and that was that we were going to address more of the sustainability in the zoning ordinance, and that we're going to do more of the LEEDs in the site review. From my position on the attack committee, site review will see the most significant projects that are coming through where you'll have the greatest impact, whereas the great majority of projects that'll be coming through for zoning are going to be relatively minor. If they're not relatively minor, they'll be going through the site review. And the regulations were designed to pick up roof luminosity, they were designed to encourage gardens, water gardens, and I think that's where the emphasis should be. The other one is, this ordinance isn't going to be static. We're going to be changing it, and I think we need to be aware of that, and I think put a little more effort in the sustainability and put a little more effort in a LEEDs-type approach in your site review regulation, I think you'll have the best of both worlds.
Chakovial?
I'm just trying to get inside the building, where we, where, I think we did a great job in this.
Zoning isn't your best tool to get inside the building.
That's why I asked the question about the building code. Is he talking about amending the building code to do this?
And I think Rick has indicated that the building code is moving in that direction with everything but calling it, quote, LEEDs, because it may be too rigid.
I, I would have to disagree.
Well, it's asking for more fenestration ratings for, for conservation, it's asking for more R-value in walls and ceilings, it's asking for more efficiency in the mechanical equipment, more insulation on the ductwork, there's a lot to it.
It, it's an improvement, but I think it's an, it's an incremental step, whereas we could easily take a much larger step with little work.
Who's going to pick the numbers?
Yeah, there's no such thing as a big step with little work. It doesn't happen that way in the real world.
If you're going to ask for a 70 roof insulation instead of, ceiling insulation instead of 49, or a, or a 35 in the wall instead of 19, I'm just picking numbers. Who's going to pick the numbers?
I understand, there, there's work to be done, there's, there's easy, easy things you can do. You can specify a white roof.
Okay.
You could specify that a downtown business has to have a shower inside the facility to encourage people to, to bike to work, and so they have a shower facility. I'm not saying, I'm not saying I'm recommending these, I'm just saying...
That would be in the plumbing code. That's a plumbing code item.
But that's not currently in the plumbing code.
No, you don't have to put a shower in.
Right. So I'm saying, there's little things like that.
But you know, to complete the picture on that, I put a shower in, somebody comes in, slips and falls. You know, there's an awful lot, or somebody goes into a community shower and they... You know, there's an awful lot, or somebody goes into a community shower and they get attacked. There's a lot...
Are you using a public shower in every building?
No, no. There's a shower, there's a shower in my building downtown.
How am I going to pick, how do we pick the building to get the shower?
I think we're getting a little far off the reservation on this one. I mean, in a nutshell, I, I think a lot of things you're talking about, Tony, are building code things.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I don't think, I mean, m- maybe, David, if you can talk a little bit about, what comes before us under zoning? What, what, you know, not that much, it's site review, that's where the real meat is, where we see things. I mean, zoning is stuff like, you know, duplexes and triplexes and, you know, there's not a lot that's covered by the building code and the site review regs are the biggies. Correct me anywhere wrong, if I'm wrong.
Ninety percent of the major projects for zoning will probably go through site review anyway, and then you're into the LEEDs part. Because you're looking at something that is substantial and concrete and can be viewed as an integral whole, which I think is how the code will work best with it. Rather than going into, for example, an eighteen nineties house and trying to retrofit it, for example, with floor heating in it. There's so many other components that need to go into it.
For the purposes of tonight's discussion, I think there's broad agreement that we really like green, we like sustainable, we like some components of LEED, but the zoning ordinance isn't necessarily the place we're going to address those. So, maybe we could pick up this conversation at a later date and continue with the zoning for now.
I mean, just, just one more thing on that, is, is I think that the, there are some things that you could do that could really push it more in the direction of LEED, but that would be kind of going away, I think, to be in conflict some ways with some of the other things you're trying to do. For example, if you tried to really emphasize keeping all your, the stormwater on-site, you might be talking about getting rid of pavement in the downtown and, and replacing it with, you know, more pervious things, and that might take away from the historic character of the downtown. There's, there's things that would change, I think, that might impact, and even the white roofs might impact historic character, so you'd be kind of, you really need to think about a lot of those things, in terms of how they would impact other, other objectives that you have. And so, it's, we can do them, but there, there could be major policy changes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, that actually brings up a point I've been thinking about, and I guess I wasn't sure, sort of, when during the process to raise it. I guess, partly comes out of my own situation, I'm in the historic district and think, well, what if I wanted to put in solar panels or various other environmentally friendly stuff that would be on the exterior, right?
Glass wall.
Right, theoretically, that would be, require some kind of commission approval, historic district commission approval. How, you know, how, how can we reconcile these two objectives? It's something that we're going to need to figure out, right? I don't know, I just feel like it's something we should at least think about.
Hey, as long as it's not a window light.
Yeah, but it could be, it could be a glass wall. I mean, lots of, that's, that could be a way, pretty glass wall. So, you'd have a, that would be a total impact on the, on historic characters, so...
Right.
It's important to think about those things.
The HDC did approve solar panels on the reconstruction of a house on Shipley Island, the little island across the way.
Right. So, I guess what, you know, what I'm saying is, can we think about, is it reasonable to somehow have language in the section relating to historic district ordinance that would encourage some kind of, you know, balancing of the environmental sustainability with historic preservation in the district? I don't know how reasonable that is.
Right now, it doesn't, right now, it does encourage the innovative use of new technologies that do not detract, and that's the balance you've got to find.
Right.
And there'll be a lot of work done on that, yeah.
Okay. Any more comments?
That was good.
Let's see if we can find another lane in mind.
Article eleven, I just briefly, I did say, we didn't, we haven't done very much with science yet, we need to work on that. Article eleven on performance standards is an area where there's some overlap between the zoning ordinance and some other general city ordinances. And as a, as a, sort of a, kind of a negative placeholder, if you will, I've taken out some of the, the existing performance standards. We've had a lot of discussion about which things should stay in zoning and which things don't need to stay in zoning and can be caught other, other ways. But this is a, you can see it's a fairly brief section in terms of the number of pages the way it is right now. It's actually only about six or eight pages in the, in the existing ordinance. But I've, I've taken a number of paragraphs out and, and set them aside to being, so that when we, when you, when the city council adopts a new zoning ordinance, they can at the same time adopt changes to the general ordinance, if that's appropriate.
As a downtown resident and one very familiar with noise, I would, I would turn to our city attorney and say, in terms of noise and vibration and enforcement, it's always been my understanding that noise, if there are noise complaints, are really a civil matter. And if it's at eleven-thirty or, you know, one o'clock in the morning or something, it's difficult to get anything accomplished because it is on the civil side. Is there any thought of, of moving the enforcement part of it more to the criminal side, or whatever the proper term is, so the police can enforce noise ordinances more so than, say, the code enforcement officer?
The city currently has two noise ordinances. One is a police power type as noise ordinance, it's older, it predates probably the nineteen-fifties. And that is enforced by the police in a violation of that noise, that noise ordinance is a violation for which district court summons will be issued. The city also has noise provisions in the zoning ordinance, much more recent, probably more technically better written, but far more difficult to enforce, basically for the reason you said. Zoning violations, for example, have peculiar defenses which would not be available generally in a criminal prosecution, such as, it's a pre-existing non-conforming situation. Police power noise ordinance, that's not a defense. Zoning noise ordinance, it is. For those reasons, I personally favor the police power type noise ordinance, the thing that I think you're suggesting we ought to have perhaps more of, I would agree. It is unfortunately beyond the scope of Mr. Tainter's work to be writing that ordinance.
That's true.
But I think your point's well taken, I agree with you, and, you know, maybe, another day, another place.
Is there anything in terms of the enforcement in these performance standards that we might be able to beef up? I know we don't have it here, but...
You know, as a, as a real practical matter, the only time the zoning noise ordinance is, is really effective is when somebody's coming in to get a building permit to do something that might be going to make some noise, and you can pull it out, and, because that's really the only time people sort of look at these provisions, when there's a building permit application in front of the city. So, if somebody wants to build something that's going to have what's obviously a, a noisy component to it, then when they, before they get their building permit, somebody will look at this and try to deal with it. It has, so it has a use.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Why wouldn't, just a point of interest here, why, why wouldn't all noise ordinances be part of the zoning ordinance? Are there all, are there...
Well, I'll give you an example. Probably the greatest single number of noise complaints we get in the city come from motorcycles. And the noise, and obviously, the zoning ordinance is not going to regulate motorcycles.
So, you have to know, John Q. Citizen has to know where to go, what bookshelf to go to, to find this ordinance.
Welcome to our world, John.
Yeah, that's a, that's a true statement. I mean, obviously, people in City Hall, I think, are charged with the duty to help John Q. Citizen figure out, you know, where to go for...
Right. Yeah.
But, but, you know, I think Bob's point is that it's, it's easier, if, if we had more up-to-date city ordinance, police power ordinance, then it would be easier to enforce that and to quickly enforce it than it is to enforce a zoning ordinance. And that the, where the city, where the zoning ordinance comes into play is, you know, if somebody's got an air conditioning unit, you know, if you're trying to locate where an air conditioning unit's going to be and that sort of thing, then it can go through site plan review and get caught. But if it's a, if it's something that's a, an activity or something like that that's happening...
As a city ordinance type thing.
And the city ordinance gives you the authority and, and, and gives you more, more immediate control, the ability to go out and get somebody to seize and assist.
Well, another place that the zoning comes in is, is when someone comes up and says, we're going to build a restaurant. Smutty Nose Brewery was an example of this, where they proposed outdoor entertainment, and that didn't get very far because of the noise component. So, I guess, I guess it would work.
Well, that, in that case, it never got to the idea of, of the noise ordinance, it was basically just the use that was being objected to.
Right, it was noisy and it violated this, or could have violated the standards and...
Yeah, but I think that it was actually more a case of people knowing what that use was than knowing how many decibels it was going to produce.
It was a preliminary component of the outdoor entertainment.
Yeah.
Yeah, very preliminary.
Yeah.
And they just didn't like everything.
So, so there's more to be talked about with that. The, and, and in general, there are, there are places in the ordinance, not too many other places, but there have been other places where I've seen areas that could be moved from zoning into more of a city-type ordinance. There's a section here called flexible development. Now, in your current ordinance, you have a section called innovative zoning, which includes the, your planned unit development section and impact fees, basically anything that you are authorizing the planning board to grant permits for rather than the zoning board of adjustment. And in this case, I've separated those out, because I've moved all of that, all of the statute, as I mentioned before, I moved all the statutory authorization references to the beginning of the ordinance, so you don't actually have to break it down by which statute it's authorized by. And so, this section is called flexible development, and it has, currently you have a, your planned unit development, and you've got your assisted living planned unit development, high density, and your assisted living planned unit development, medium density, or whichever it is. And we now have the, the residential density incentive planned unit development. What I've, the way I've organized it here is I've created this general section, Article twelve, for anything that is, is of a flexible development nature. And at the time, we were considering the non-residential planned unit development, that would have gone into this section also. It would have been one of those things where you have a conditional use permit to allow kind of moving around of buildings and uses in a, in a more flexible way on a, on a large lot. We don't have that, so now what we have in this section is a general statement, you know, what this, what this section is all about. The next section is a, about residential planned unit developments in general, and then the open space residential, which is your current residential PUD, and the residential incentive planned unit development, which is the one we, we worked on relating to Atlantic Heights. So, that, that's a sort of a general section that's like modifying dimensional regulations and uses.
Would it be beneficial to put sort of a placeholder for a generic non-residential PUD?
It wouldn't hurt, yeah.
In, in the event another smutty-nose type application, I mean, it's not that that one would fly, but, you know, to have it in there and, and some sort of general explanation.
Yeah, may I? I'm, I'm actually, sorry, I'm, I'm actually concerned about doing that, and that I don't want to imply or give the perception that we're trying to sneak something in. I'm concerned about that. I don't know, I think we need to think about that.
Help me out with that. What do you mean by sneak something in? Help me out.
I'm worried about the perception of a planning board that voted nine to nothing in favor of a non-residential PUD getting denied zero-nine by the city council, and then putting in a placeholder for a non-residential PUD in our zoning ordinance. I'm worried about the public perception of that.
Let me also suggest one thing, though. Right now, in, in a business district or an industrial district, there's nothing that precludes you having more than one structure on a lot or actually trying to do something like that. You could create a placeholder, you could do it later, but you actually have a fair amount of flexibility under the existing regulations to do everything that was being done there.
But by putting a placeholder, a placeholder in there, it would at least acknowledge that that is a, is part of flexible development. And, and I'm not sure I, actually, I do disagree with you, but I could be convinced otherwise. I mean, I'm not sure the public perception would be that we're trying to sneak anything in. This is just a placeholder, period. But, that's okay.
Yeah, I think it's complicated to decide which way this goes, because I think the public is highly influenced by the actual project, rather than the non-residential PUD. I don't think any of them objected to the concept, it was the project that they objected to, so.
I guess, you know, I would suggest that maybe this section would be just a way to spur your thinking, but are there other areas that you think might be, where you think the, the zoning might be more flexible? Other situations or locations in the city where you think you, you would like to have more flexibility that you can't get right now? Maybe, as David said, you don't need that, you already have it. But if there is, if there is something that is, where you would like to be able to allow a different type of mixing of uses or, or densities or whatever than you have right now, this might be, this could be a place to keep, put it. You don't, we don't need to fill it up with anything right now, but it's something that is a possibility, just, just, again, we're trying to, to lay the structure so that it's easy enough to, to put something, add something to it without adding on, there's another article at the end of the ordinance. Impact fees, there's, you have a brief, very brief impact fee section in your ordinance right now. You don't use it. We, I haven't changed it. One of the things we have talked about, looking at, but it seems right now as though the city is able to get most of what it wants from development proposals through negotiation rather than through an impact fee process. So, right now, there are no, there doesn't seem to be an urgent need to change it, but here it is as a separate section.
I think it's also important, just to add, that it's also there in case somebody were to challenge, we can show that we have it. Because I agree with that we don't use it very often, but it's there in case we need to rely on it.
Miscellaneous provisions are kind of miscellaneous provisions, they're just odds and ends that kind of fall at the end of the ordinance. And then there's the, the definition section. And I, I do want to say, one, in an earlier draft, I tried to pull all of the definitions into the definition section. We've now pulled some of them back out because they're, and you'll see them as we get into Article six, because some definitions are very specific to only one article, such as sexually-oriented businesses and floodplains, which we're going to get into right now. So, we can turn to...
Before you move on, the impact fee section?
Yeah.
I was just curious if this, if the definition of impact fees is the same as the state has, in that everything in this section can't be used for maintenance?
Correct. Yeah, it is, it can, that's, it's only, it's only authorized as an impact fee by state law. So, I've, I've actually changed the definition of the, the city's definition to conform to the state definition, which was slightly different. And so, and, but that's true, you can't use it, you can only use it for capital infrastructure costs. So, Article six. So, as I said, there are, we have five overlay districts in the city. The floodplain district, the historic district, the downtown overlay, Osprey Landing, and Airport Approach. The floodplain district is a peculiar thing in that I understand we can't touch it. So, there were lots of things in here I really didn't like, and I tried to touch, and I kept saying, no.
Who's they?
FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency. In order to qualify for federal flood insurance, you have to use their wording exactly. So, there's stuff in here, for example, they have a term, they use manufactured home, that's no longer the correct term, it's manufactured housing, and, and, you know, so, for the rest of the ordinance, we use manufactured housing, for floodplain, we use manufactured home. For, for, for the rest of the ordinance, substantial improvement means one thing, for floodplain, it means something different. So, it's, it's just a, it's just an oddity. But, so the, this, you can tell me to change it, and I'm not going to do it.
So, our review is really important here.
Right, yeah.
I'm going to ask you to change something, add, add something. Can you add the definition, design flood elevation? Because the design flood elevation is higher than the base flood elevation.
Is it used in the text? I, I, I'm not sure, I can, I can certainly add a definition, I don't want to have a definition here that's not used in their text and I can't change their text.
I don't, I don't know if it's used in the text, probably not, but the, it's, it's a confusing thing to know where to put the first floor of your home, and it is, it is not at the base flood elevation. It is at the design flood elevation, which is higher.
But if the term isn't used in this article, why would we define it?
Let's find out if it is used.
Yeah, I guess find out if it is used, that's a good point. I just, I just, I guess I'd ask Rick, is it somewhere else?
I've never heard the term. I've only heard FEMA term, use the phrase "at or above base flood elevation." So, I don't, oh, well...
That's probably what that means. It probably means, it's probably shorthand for at or above base flood elevation.
But they always use that phrase, at or above base flood elevation.
I mean, I could show you another time, but it's, it's definitely a term in FEMA documents. And, uh, having designed, designed several coastal structures that, and it's an important concept to realize.
Is it new? Do you know if it's new?
It's in the coastal construction manual.
Okay. That's their bible.
Yeah.
After I finish the IBC, I'll read that.
No, you won't.
Yeah, people think it.
What was your term, Tony? What'd you say?
Design flood elevation.
Okay.
I'll check and see if it's in the ordinance.
It doesn't appear to be in here.
I thought it was your term.
Yeah.
It would be on page, like, one hundred to one oh one.
It may not be in this document.
I'm just trying to avoid the accident of putting a house at the wrong elevation.
Absolutely.
So, moving on to the historic district. This is an area where the historic district commission has, has reviewed this. They've had, I think, two or three meetings on this.
Three.
Three meetings on this and have given us some, uh, some suggestions and comments. I have incorporated, um, most of their specific comments. There were some more general questions that maybe need a little bit more research. I've also done some reorganization because, and some re, um, some relabeling, if you will. They, the, and I guess it really comes up on page one hundred six, one hundred seven, where the, right now, you have major application, minor application and major application. What it's really talking about is a major, minor project and a major project. And so I've, I've tried to clarify that and tried, and tried to move all of the criteria together because there were, it was kind of, the review criteria were sort of spread out. So let me just, since you've dealt with this much more than you have with some of the other things, uh, let me just go through this. The, I created this new section at the beginning, ten six twenty-one, which is on page one hundred three, begins on page one hundred three, which pulls together the findings section, it's really a findings section from the existing ordinance. And then on page one hundred four lists the six objectives. And the six objectives are kind of under the historic district commission right now. And the reason I moved them up front is that in their current location, it kind of implies that they relate to the historic district commission's review and not to minor projects as well. These are really, this is really the objective of the whole section is to achieve these things. So I thought that they should be up front regardless of whether it goes to a major project review or not, as the kinds of things that should be looked at and that you want to identify as the objectives of, of the section. So, so I've moved some things that seem more substantive out of the historic district commission and into the, into, into other, other sections. And so the next section is historic district commission and talks about the duties and what the, what the commission should be looking at and the scope of reviews and so forth. Then there's the application process and I try to, try to make this, yeah, Tony, I'm sorry.
Did this, I remember reading the previous HDC zoning where it had a makeup of the board. Is that in a different area of our zoning?
Yes, that's not in your zoning, that's in your general city ordinances.
City ordinance, okay.
And as a matter of fact, that is referred to on page one hundred five, about the eighth line from the top, the commission shall the powers and duties specified in section one point four oh three of the ordinance of the city. So that's what that's going to. And, uh, then we have the application process, uh, page one oh five to one oh six. And one of the things the HDC recommended was on the top of page one oh six, increasing the threshold from, for this, for these two different ways of doing applications from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars for exterior renovations. And, uh, then we have the minor project review, lists of those things that would be, that would qualify for the minor project review, which simply goes to the code official. Doesn't require a certificate from the historic district commission. Then on page one oh seven, uh, we have the major project review section, which is, which anything that doesn't qualify for a, um, for a minor review becomes a major review. One word that was added in here by the commission under, which is a significant word, I believe, is under applicability under ten six twenty-five, ten, on page one oh seven, uh, the word demolition was inserted. Uh, that was, that was a big discussion at their, at their meeting. So just to clarify that a demolition, um, would, would be a major project review rather than just a minor review.
Interject one with you. When we, uh, I was on the commission at the time, we, we put the dollar limits, uh, on there. And the dollar limits were put on also to encourage work sessions. Because, uh, many people would show up looking for approval with a relatively expensive or, uh, application, uh, having all their plans, uh, done and it would not meet with commission approval. Had, um, and it'd be some unhappiness and had they had that work session in the first place, uh, everything would have been more copacetic. And that's, that is the reason why the dollar, the dollar figures are put in originally. That's done, that was done about fourteen, ten, ten, fourteen years ago.
The dollar figures don't, all the dollar figures change is what you have to submit. It doesn't change whether you go to a work session.
There was no change in, uh, the staff is requiring almost every project to go for a work session. So there's no change there.
But is there any language in here that encourages?
It's on the application, too.
It's actually, um, and I believe it's also, uh, sounds very familiar. Yes, it is. We'll get to it in about three pages.
Okay, all right, that's what I was looking for.
Okay, uh, I try, again, I tried to, tried to structure this. So we, this, we, on page one oh six and one oh seven is kind of the breakdown between minor and major projects. The, um, let's see, any other, uh, significant changes? One of the things that I've, that I've done here is tried to take out the site visit section from, right now, the site visit is a kind of hidden inside the public hearing section. So I pulled them outside. So if you go to page one ten, top of page one ten is encouraging you to request a work session. And then there's that whole second, there's a separate section that's called out on work sessions. And then down at the bottom of the page is a separate section on site visits. So we've tried to pull that out so it doesn't appear as if it only occurs during a public hearing.
You don't think the month, the fifty thousand dollar threshold or whatever should be in that draft in that work session?
This is just a procedure for how you do your work session. It wouldn't be where you'd be looking for a dollar figure. That's in the, the other zoning ordinance.
I didn't think so, is it? I thought, I thought the current zoning was, was the current twenty-five thousand dollar figure was simply to say what kind of renderings you provide.
Yeah, it's not in the work session section.
I may be wrong, but...
You're looking for a threshold, a lower threshold trigger to get people to a work session.
I'm just, I'm just looking for a, a trigger, I want it, I want it.
I think the trigger is applicants are encouraged to request a work session with the commission to explore zonal barriers, which applies to everything.
Right.
And, you know, David's right, staff strongly steers people towards work sessions now. I mean, almost everything's a work session now.
Yeah, the dollar amount is on exhibits. That's where it was coming in. When you're requiring that a photograph, for example, be doctored up to show how it would be looking. And frankly, we didn't use it that often. But twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand, you hit almost on any project. But the work sessions are unchanged. You are encouraged to go to a work session. And if somebody's going to be stubborn, that's what the commission's for, you're not going to be rolled over on that.
Right.
Not that the commission is ever stubborn.
Just dropping.
Just a quick one, Rick, and I, you know, forgive me if it might be in here, on the expiration of approvals, page one oh nine. Do you ever really say what you have to do in order to not have it expire? Anywhere else, it's not there, so I didn't know.
The next paragraph kind of tells you, right?
What's that?
The next paragraph kind of tells you.
What?
Expiration of approvals?
Well, no more than one extension should...
No, what, what triggers the expiration?
Oh.
Good question.
I didn't put my new windows in or, you know.
It's a good question, yeah.
Anyway, we, yeah, you gotta get, basically, you gotta get a building permit. You gotta get a building permit.
Yeah.
You gotta tell them that, probably. I didn't know if it was somewhere else.
It may be.
And that, and that would fall also for zoning board approval as well or, or our approval. Just something that I, happens to be something we're dealing with now.
Right now. What's the answer to the question?
You have to get a building permit. You need to get, you need to exercise your land use approval somehow and you do that through acquiring a building permit.
And then it goes on to a different set of schedules.
Yeah, and then the building code, time, clock, spots.
There is, there is, I don't, I don't believe it's here, but there is another section I was working on today that actually did have that. They said you had to do it within a year.
Yeah.
And I need to find it, yeah.
And so I didn't know whether the cross-referencing was in order or whatever, but whatever, to make it clear. Because that comes to be a sticky.
Right. Good. Good point. Okay, so basically, that's, you know, the, I have not, at this point, we have not changed much of the substance. We've added, I think we've added more than we've taken away. We really haven't taken away substance. We've really added some substance and tried to simplify the process and make it easier to follow. And, again, this has had, uh, input from the historic commission. So we'll see, you know, what that, how that works, how this, how this works. And we'll look at that question about what...
If I could just add, too, I think the commission would be very desirous of having a work session with the board and with, uh, Mr. Tainer at some point so they can make sure that their communication is going. But they did seem reasonably pleased with the process and I think it's working out well.
I think we could probably give this to them now and just say, here's, here's, here's what we think we have, yeah. The, on page one twelve, um, the bottom of page one twelve and through most of page one thirteen is the downtown overlay district that was, uh, adopted two years ago, maybe? I'm not sure.
A lifetime.
But, yeah, but not, uh, this has not been changed in any way. Bottom of page one thirteen to the middle of page one fourteen is what is being proposed to be called the Osprey Landing Overlay District. As I said, it's right now called the Mariner, the MV slash OR overlay district. And it encompasses areas that are, uh, used both for residential purposes and for office purposes. It's kind of a large overlay district and has been developed partially into, into a office park. And the concept here would be to essentially rezone those areas, to, he said they need to be rezoned, to the, to the actual district that most fits the current use, whether it's an OR district for the office park area and, um, one of the, one or more residential districts for the residential area. And then to apply this overlay district to the residential area. And the only reason that you need the overlay district right now is for those two points on the top of page one fourteen. The, um, the court settlement had specified a mix of rental and ownership housing and specified an affordability requirement over a certain period of time. So that's, since the, since the districts have all been built, essentially been built out or close to built out and we, and you know where they're going, uh, it seems that those are the only things that you really need to retain. So we get rid of several pages of regulations that really don't mean anything anymore and just turn them into just, just the bare minimum.
Just a question on that, it's kind of a Bob question, too. What if part of Osprey Landing burnt down? Would we be covered under the existing agreements with the private developer or would we need to rely on something we've taken out?
Osprey Landing and this ordinance came out of this, the bankruptcy, the chapter eleven bankruptcy and the approval by the bankruptcy court with the support of the city of a particular plan. It's what you see out there now. The plan, uh, the performance of that plan is secured by a lot of different things. Agreements with the city, agreements with, um, different affordable housing agencies, all of which are recorded. And, uh, that's sort of the safety net, I think, that if it all burnt down and had to be rebuilt, it would have to be rebuilt as it is now unless those, those plans were changed.
So, so do we even need the two items, ten, at the top of one fourteen?
This is substantially cut back from what's in the existing ordinance. And I think that this came about as a result of conversations between the current owners of Osprey Landing and, and Mr. Tainer.
I guess, yeah, but I mean, that is a question, I mean, do we, would we, this is, this is the most that I would think that we would need, but do the agreement, would the agreements even?
In my, there may not be the need for any of this.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt to have this, it's so short. So, I mean, it gets, his question is, do we?
It is sort of a historic record for anyone that's looking at it to explain why it's like that because you don't have access to the recorded documents, whereas this is a common one that's readily available.
God knows the day is going to come when you're not here and I'm not here and none of us are here. So perhaps a little bit of a red flag that would cause somebody to think there's something a little different about that part of the city might be worth leaving a few sentences in.
What's this mean?
We'd probably have to find Mike Dunbar back on the planning board to see if he could explain it.
He may have been the one that approved the chapter eleven plan.
So, so we should actually reference, do we need to reference here as recorded, the Rockingham County Registry of Deeds?
You know, that might be a good idea to put a deed reference in. We can, we can find one.
Well, I have, at the very top of page one fourteen, I didn't have the reference, so I just left that as, as shaded. It says court documents, question mark.
Right, and that's basically what I'm saying. I think the court documents, we just, the book and page.
Reference the book and page? I have it all upstairs. I can get a few tomorrow.
And, and we also need to just, uh, update the parcel list because there were three large parcels in the subdivision plan and I think they've been renumbered. All those parcels have been renumbered since...
It constitutes what we're talking about, three bound volumes in excess of a hundred pages apiece.
We could add that as an appendix.
We can just reference that.
You're going to read that after the...
Read after, everything.
Light reading, Tony.
But to City's point, if that's there and it's, it's comprehensive, then you don't need anything. Other than that reference.
Just a reference, right. So, speaking of light reading, uh, section ten six fifty is the airport to approach overlay district. And, um...
Duck.
Uh, I have tried to make sense of this. I mean, I guess I, I've probably spent, it's probably been sitting innocuously in your ordinance for many years and, and probably nobody cares, but I was caring, but I wanted, I wanted to make sure I understood it. So I tried to make sense of it and I don't know who it was last week who said, we really have imaginary surfaces in the zoning ordinance? But we do. Uh, we have civil, civil airport imaginary surfaces, which is kind of scary if you're in the plane. But the, uh, we have, we have this, this definition on page one fifteen that, that is really hard to follow, but I've tried to straighten it out and there were some grammatical problems with it that I think I've got. But I do think that there are conflicts here. I mean, I've, I've, and I don't know whether we should, how far we want to go with this, but it seemed, I have that long footnote at the bottom of page one fifteen where I think there are two absolutely contradictory definitions of what the horizontal surface is. One is eighty-five, one, eight thousand four hundred fifty feet, the other is ten thousand feet. But basically what this is, is it sets up a series of imaginary surfaces that are at angles within which building heights are limited. And it really doesn't have any, in many cases, any real impact because so much of the land near the airport is highway and stuff like that. Nobody's going to build something there at the end of the runway. But I guess there are some areas maybe where it would, would have...
Isn't the history on it, Bob, David? You know, when, when did this get in here and why does it have to stay there?
It's a requirement, actually, under New Hampshire statutes that a municipality within airport shall have these regulations.
But to be fair, we only figured this out last week.
The irony, too, is the regulations, I guess, were written when, Bob, fifty-five?
Right, there, in, in that red book is a statute, which we found last week, that said if a municipality has an airport, it shall adopt these kind of regulations.
Is there any way to do it in shorter form and just reference the state statutes?
No, no, I don't think so because it doesn't give you the regulations. It says you shall adopt regulations.
So there's no reason to modify them even though they're kind of bizarre? They, they go unused?
Correct. I've never, I've been here twenty-five years and never looked at them.
So would your recommendation be just leave them alone?
Keep them as skeletal as possible and leave them.
I think we should add other imaginary things.
Because I would certainly want to put a building a hundred and fifty feet above the established airport elevation. I'd like to see that design.
Mr. Coviello.
Real concern.
They never, uh, having done, done, um, a lot of projects in P's in that area, what the, the biggest concern is a crane. That's, that's the thing that sets us off. And I've never actually had to look at the Portman zoning ordinance, but I, I certainly have to look at the P's regulations and you have to get FAA approval. There's so many approvals you have to get just to have a crane. That's the big thing and you can have a crane on that road very easily, installing traffic signs.
Does a crane, is a crane subject to zoning?
Crane won't go into this, so, what I'm saying, there, this gets used a lot, but never this document. It's another FAA document.
Actually, I can name one where we actually did look at it briefly because we could quickly determine it wasn't. But that was the water tower on Constitution, which is right in the center of the flight path. And some of the good pilots that I know have threatened to go up there and paint some black tire marks on it just to prove the point.
So that's, uh, Article Six. We can move on to our, yes?
So if we were to, um, deal with the outcomes of the work session that we had last time on it went heights, we might have a parallel thing to, an overlay here?
That could be one of the options.
Could be an option.
Could be an option, yeah. Could be, it could be there, could be changing the base zoning district to... Could be an option, yeah. Could be, it could be there, it could be changing the base zoning district, it could be just changing regulations. Could be changing historic, yeah, could be changing historic district here, or it could be creating a different overlay district, right? So, Article Fifteen. I'm not gonna read every single definition. But it, I'll just go through, I'll just kind of flip through them and catch some things that, that I think are, could be of interest as you look at this. On page one ninety-eight, at the bottom, right now you have, as I mentioned earlier, you have the assisted living planned unit development in your ordinance, and you have had discussions about a, an assisted living facility as a use. I think that it should be a use, whether you, whether you decide to permit it as a use or not. I've adapted your assisted living facility definit, assisted living planned unit development definition to kind of, I've, I've referenced, I've looked at the, at the state health department regulations or, I can't remember which, which department it is that has regulations governing these things and making, trying to make sure that they, that we're not contradicting them. I've also looked at, at regulations from other parts of the country and I've talked to Rick about this. The, the building code treats different scales of assisted living facilities differently. And a lot of communities in, particularly in California and Arizona, have these two subdefinitions, assisted living center and assisted living home. There's probably some consultant out there who's doing a lot of zoning ordinances because they all look very similar. In Arizona, they tend to be, they tend to break at eleven people, I think, and, which may be the old, I'm not sure if that's the old I B C. Yeah. So right now, there's a, there's a zero, a one to five residence, a six to sixteen residence, and a more than sixteen, seventeen or more residence. And so what I've proposed here is just creating two definitions, one that would be for fewer than six and one would be six or more. So with the idea that you might want to have these small assisted living facilities in a residential district, but you might not want to have large ones. And I, this is not prejudging whether you want to do it or not. It's just setting forth kind of that option so you can think about different, different ways of, of doing that.
Are assisted living center and assisted living home supposed to be indented?
Yes, so in this, in the definition section, indent means a subcategory of what, of what's above.
Okay.
And I, I would sometimes, if it were, if it has a different, if it begins, if the subcategory begins with a different letter, sometimes I have a cross-reference from somewhere else, you'll see. On, on page one ninety-nine, we've included a definition of best management practice. Don, yes?
It, it deals with B M Ps. To me, there's a, it's kind of a fuzzy definition because I've always viewed best management practices as a euphemism for minimum standards. They're not the best management practices.
Funny, it's a funny term, yeah.
Yeah, because there, there are, for instance, somebody proposes an oil-water separator, when in fact, some other mechanism would do a better job. So if you take a literal definition, it's not best management practices, it's minimum standards.
You're right. Well, it's not minimum, but it's, it's kind of, it's kind of state-of-the-art, common, financially feasible. You know, it's, it's, it's just a term that, that is just generally.
Right, and the two words that are important is technologically or economically feasible. The or gives you a choice between the two, and, and this definition may be a standard definition for this.
It is, yeah.
Couldn't it be and?
It's actually the def, I've seen it as or, and that's, that's, I've, I've, I've looked at a lot of sources.
I completely disagree with that because an applicant could stand up and say, "Well, it's technologically possible, but it's not economically feasible," when economics might be a very small piece of it. It's just they don't want to spend the money.
Well, this could be, it just could be, if it's an or, you can just take away technol, technological, and the sentence doesn't make sense. The practice is that it's determined to be the most economically feasible.
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense. Most economically feasible, if you do nothing.
Right, exactly. Just dump it straight into the wetland.
Back to best management practices, I believe, and I, I may be wrong, I don't design stormwater treatment systems, but I believe the state puts out a manual of best management practices that you flip through like, okay, I need to deal with my stormwater system, and they, they would have a, a Vor Technic system as one page. You flip the page, there's a, a swale, and it kind of has a standard. So that's what they're, I think they're saying, is go to this, go to this book and pick one out of there.
And I, and what I, what I've done here is I, I've tried to make the, the basic definition be kind of broadly encompassing because oftentimes you'll see a, a stormwater best management practice, or a wetlands best management practice, or a traffic best management practice. So I've tried to have a general definition that is, that is, the definition is general, but I also, since, since the wetlands section of the, of the ordinance specifically references best management practices, I included this sub, this second paragraph to talk about wetlands. But I will look into that.
Would you be averse to taking the word or and striking it and making the word and in its place? Technologically and economically feasible?
I think it really depends on the citations, really.
Say that?
I think it depends on the citations.
I will look at, I will, I will look at it carefully.
Okay.
Or maybe just delete those two qualifiers and just say the most feasible.
This actually, I mean, it really, this really is a standard definition, so I want to, I want to make sure that I'm, I'm not conflicting with other.
When we're in site review, we're looking for that term because it tells us something. So it, it, it does have a meaning, but I don't know if it's and or.
I think the important thing is, you know, is that second sentence that includes structural and non-structural and operation and maintenance. It's, 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 it's not just putting in a separator, but it's how frequently you clean the separator and that, or whatever you do to a separator. I don't know, you know, how frequently you go in there. That's a, it's a part of the practice. Okay. Let's see, let's skip along here. If you see anything that catches your eye, let me know, but I'm just going to go across until I see something that I know is, is something new. Yes?
I just have a question about how you got to this section. Like, did you, because if everything hasn't been written yet, then you don't know what all your defines.
Well, we've written a lot of it. No, no, we, yeah, this is, most of it has, is in some kind of draft, but it's just not ready, it's not ready for prime time yet. And so this is, but this is, I, I guess this will show you kind of the range of things we're looking at and, and, and the, I just wanted to highlight some of the changes that are in here.
So pretty much if it's in here, it's probably relevant to.
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, there are a couple, there may be a couple places left in here. There were a number of things in the definitions section of the ordinance that were never used in the ordinance, and I've tried to take them out. There may be a couple here that are still left, but I've, I've tried to, tried to deal with those. And there are, that's the same, not just for the general definitions, but the definitions that were in other places as well. So I've tried to define terms that are frequently used and to eliminate definitions for terms that aren't used, because this is kind of confusing.
Do we need a definition for caregiver care facility?
We'll be working on it.
Do we have, do we, do you, that's one possibility.
I think the way that'll get approached, though, is we're gonna be working on something with some parties. And as that ordinance proposed gets more life, if it does or whatever, it'll get brought into this. So the definitions will be created, the definitions would be added, is the way I see it.
Is that what I was thinking of, is, is that the, the, is that the?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Coviello.
Question for Rick. Is the definition for height of structure strictly, directly from international building code, or is that different?
No, that's, that is something, it's actually your current definition, I believe. Is that, where is that now?
Well, that's, that I think is.
Two oh one?
Yeah.
Where are we now?
Yeah, between two hundred, two hundred and one. I think it's your current definition.
Referring to the base.
Yeah.
Great plane, yeah.
Yep.
Gee, Rick, those drawings look familiar.
I mean, Tony, it just gets so complicated because you, you need the beginning point and the end point, and they both are variable, and so.
Having worked on the Martin Gale, yeah.
Right, and what's wonderful is we're trying to make the two doctrines the same so that the person doesn't have to fight it, fight the answer twice.
I wonder if we could just make a note that this is from I B C.
Yeah, well, and actually, I want to double check to make sure the O six hasn't changed anything.
House of Dwight.
Our boarding house ordinance actually has a slightly different definition, and Bob isn't here, but I can't remember. It's, it's not the no more than ten persons. It's a new ordinance that we passed last year, so we want to make, I would think.
That's not, that's not the zoning, so we want to make this, this consistent, right?
Well, consistent, right, because we wouldn't want boarding house defined as one thing in one place and a different thing in our ordinance.
Right, right. And you have, you also, you have a boo, boarding house and a rooming house, so I'll, I'll look into that. I think that was actually mentioned to me, I didn't catch it.
Actually, I would encourage, and I know Rick is too, that for board members to go through it because truly the devil's in the B P L.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So just take your time and go through it. Pretend you're an attorney looking for an excuse.
A drinking establishment. It's my understanding that there is no such thing as an out-and-out, only serve alcohol. You have to have some mix of food.
Perfect timing, Bob.
Just a little too early.
No, I found a, I found a definition, and I believe it's in the state liquor, because I was looking at that today and was pulling down all the definitions I could find of these things. And there is a definition that says, "A place that serves alcoholic beverages without benefit of food." And I thought without benefit of food sounded like, you know, it's gonna go, your stomach is getting kind of.
We discussed this during our staff meeting, talking about these definitions last week. And I, and we have, of course, nearly daily contact with drinking establishments in, and.
In the course of our work.
Both within and without. And, and here's the, here's the basic lineup. In New Hampshire, there's no such thing as a pure barroom, like they, they have them in Maine, for example, where they only serve liquor without food. Now, there are some exceptions. One's kind of major and exists here. That's the private club. The old Starlight, for example, would have been it. And another, another exception is an establishment that has more than four hun, more than five hundred seats. Doesn't have to serve. That's a ballroom license. There also are some ancient kind of licenses that kind of predate current regulations. The press room, actually, is an example. The press room is a very rare type of license in this state. They do not have to serve food, although they do, but what they have to do is have music at all times, entertainment, which they do. So there are some narrow exceptions, but you're generally correct. However, the term drinking establishment, I do not think has any particular relevance or meaning, and we discussed last week.
And I was, I was trying to create a category under which we could take your current definitions, because you have those three terms that are defined, and, and as far as I can see, bar and tavern are both defined and are defined identically. And nightclub is, is different, and so I was just trying to, trying to do that, but I will, I'll continue to look at this.
If there is a definition in our zoning and it, and the, the state law is a different definition, which takes precedent? Isn't the state law ultimately takes precedent?
You'd have to comply with both.
Right, they're, they're separate matters, and you would look at whichever definition was relevant to the issue of the moment. And, you know, typically we would have, if we have a problem with establishment serving underage people or over-serving people, then we're looking at liquor commission definitions. For that purpose, somebody comes in to get a building permit to build something, then we're looking at these definitions to determine whether to give the building permit.
I have a question, though, because the reason we got these definitions is because of a problem we had back in the eighties, the Malibu. And that's really where we started using the term bar tavern. I'm just wondering, since they seem to be the same, could we actually delete one?
Yes, I would say, I would say you could. I, I just haven't figured it out yet.
You're, we're thinking the same.
That's why, that's why it's shaded.
Well, you know, that actually makes a point that we talked about a lot last week. Maybe somebody said this when I was out of the room. You really cannot conduct a detailed analysis of these definitions that has much meaning until you attach the definitions to the ordinance. Because until you know how the words are used, it's, it's kind of meaningless to overanalyze the words.
Good point.
That's a good start.
Good flavor for what's coming.
Right. On page two oh four, this is one of the examples under E, electronics manufacturing. It was kind of a, I think that's where it is right now in your ordinance, it's called electronics manufacturing. I've grouped it under manufacturing or with manufacturing, and there's actually, you actually have both industrial and manufacturing. And I think we're gonna try to simplify it even further, but that's just an example of the type of cross-reference. Let's see. We have, on page, bottom of page two oh five, we have fish prepar, fish preparation and fish processing. We, in our discussion last week, we, we talked about the fact that we don't have a, a general food processing definition. It's separate from other manufacturing, so we need to, to look at that.
Your family should catch up with our civil union law so that we don't define out.
Doesn't it, doesn't it, it says if they're residing as a single housekeeping unit is.
But look at the next clause I can think of.
Oh, more than five persons.
Civil union people who have children.
Family shall contain more than five persons.
Wow.
We want to deal with the demographic.
So you don't have fifty college students living in one apartment.
So maybe what it should be is unless.
Read that two or three different ways.
Unless all members are related by, by some, by legal, you know, civil process, you know. It says blood, marriage, or adoption.
Whatever, right.
Or civil union.
Yeah, alright.
Okay, so add, yeah.
So currently, our zoning allows five unrelated people to live?
Yep.
Don't worry, it's the neighbors that turn them in.
I'm worried about five, yes. If you, if you, I know Durham has three, but that's a different reason.
Well, Boston's going to, I think it's five. Yeah.
Cambridge, I think.
Yeah, or four, four or five.
That's Brookline, four.
Four student students, that's it.
This, by the way, is largely the existing definition, which we can trace back to about nineteen sixty.
About nineteen sixty-eight, I would bet.
Yeah.
On page two oh seven, if I could kind of head to there, at the bottom of the page, Rick, we have high hazard uses.
Oh, my gosh.
And I have a long footnote before you read too. No, basically, we have, there are five categories of high hazard uses. And I've actually seen this, going, looking at some other places, I've seen this approach calling high hazard A for one and two, high hazard B and high hazard C, because high hazard C is the semiconductor fabrication facility.
Good code, good concept.
And so, right now, electronics manufacturing prohibits electronics manufacturing that is a high hazard use. So it would actually prohibit any electronics manufacturing that is, has to do with semiconductor fabrication. So, so what we're, what we're saying, when we get to that section now, you, in the revised section, you'll see that it prohibits high hazard A and high hazard B, but not high hazard C. So, so it kind of groups them together. Historic structure, the footnote notes that this is something that's in the floodplain district, but it's something I kept in the general regulations because I thought it might be useful in the future, thinking about historic structures. The term historic structure is not used in historic district regulations, so it's a, it doesn't affect the regulations to put a, a definition here. I just thought it might be useful to have a general historic structure definition for use in the, in the ordinance at large. On page two oh nine, I've revised the definition of hospital. It's, it's defined two different ways in the, in the current ordinance in different sections, and I've tried to look at some, some, some state, some, some government and some insurance regulations to try to come up with a, a general definition for hospital that would be useful. Let's see. On page two ten, I mentioned before, we've revised the definition of impact fee to be consistent with state law. And bottom of two ten, industrial occupancy, it's pretty much your existing regulation, your existing definition. You can see the cross-references to all the other terms, light industry, electronics manufacturing, and manufacturing facility. That still needs some more consolidation to work together. Yeah, go ahead.
The hospital, does that include this new type of hospital? I think that we're gonna see like a piece of residential rehabilitation hospital, this new kind of thing that's emerging of what, people are neither chronically ill nor at that point acutely ill, but are going there to save. You know, it's a del, it's a dollar saving while they are rehabilitating from something.
Says that it's not, does not include a convalescent hospital, which sounds like what you're talking about.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's an emerging kind of concept, and I know there's one being proposed for P's. So that might be something that we think about what that is. I think they're called rehabilitation hospitals.
Well, actually, the, this term is, they may be, they may be kind of more generic, generically, or in popular language called rehabilitation, but this actually is from, convalescence is actually from insurance regulations and government regulations. So it's probably the same thing, but I'll check into that. But is that something you'd want to add as an allowed use, do you think, or?
Seems it would be covered in the first sentence.
Well, I, that's my question.
Care and treatment of sick or injured patients. So if they're injured, they're in rehab, so.
But the question is, does it, the second sentence, which says it does not include convalescent hospitals, does that mean?
That's my question, yeah. So I would think we would want to have it included, but.
And you would want to have it included as an allowed use as a hospital?
I think so.
I would, I would think so too.
Yeah.
I spent too much time in the engineering department. I spent too much time in the engineering department. Convalescent, help me out.
Getting better.
Getting better.
Getting better, okay.
Rehabbing.
Oh, I was thinking you were complaining about.
I know, I don't know.
Same as riparian.
That I know.
It's a good way to convalesce is to lie on the bank of the river.
Where would hospice fall?
Good question.
We've never treated, uh, well, one, one of them is within the hospital itself. So accessory use, if you want, it's not been an issue.
What if someone wants to put a hospice on a lot somewhere?
Doesn't sentence one cover that then? Would be facility licensed to provide care containing facilities for nursing care?
Twenty-four hours a day, yeah.
Where, sentence one of, of definition of what? Of hospital?
Sentence number one under hospital.
Well, I'm not, I think that's, it's the definition of nursing care, whether that's applicable to that.
Okay, so, good question, whether that's a nursing, whether hospice is a nursing home. So we, so, yeah, is a, is a hospice a nursing home or is it a hospital?
Right.
I just see, I see more and more of them going.
Okay, look at that. I was supposed to fix the household pet thing, I think.
Oh, don't go there.
Skip right over that one.
Oh my gosh.
Is it about lizard?
We're reserving a whole evening for that one.
It's about horses, I think. On, um, on page, uh, two thirteen, we have a, a new definition of low-impact development. One of the things, trying to include sustainability in here. We also have the, um, definition of manufactured housing to replace mobile home, because that's the current state definition, state term and definition, and has its own regulations.
Why, why are you eliminating some of these things to just like stormwater management? Low-impact development, doesn't that have a broader?
Low-impact development, I believe, but I may be, I may be mistaken. I have always heard of it in terms of stormwater management.
It's most often, I would say.
I don't know of another way in which it's been applied that way.
I think that's the only place we use it.
I mean, it is, it is a term, it's a technical term related to stormwater management. It may be used in other fields too, but I don't know.
It, it feels to me, we've even had people come before us recently using that term to describe multiple things that they're doing. But, um, more generic, including coverage issues, I mean, uh, open space and whatever, but. Maybe they're using incorrectly.
Yeah, right, it sounds good.
Yeah. This is, this is actually a technical term. This is actually an EPA definition, I believe. On, on the top of page two fourteen, uh, is the, the change in electronics manufacturing, which I, which I mentioned. See if there's anything else that is, is new. On page two eighteen, I'm, I'm still working on restaurant-type definitions. Haven't quite got there yet.
Rick?
Yes.
Question back on, uh, two fourteen, under marina.
Yeah.
Uh, a place for docking or storage of pleasure boats or providing services to pleasure boats. Why would you limit that to pleasure boats? Why would not a, um, someone on the order of like a Dion's Yacht Yard, where they pull up commercial boats? Fishing boats, uh, sail, big sailing boats and things like that. Why is that limited to pleasure boats?
It's the current definition. I, I mean, the answer, I don't know the answer. There probably is an answer, but I don't know. How would that be, how would that use be treated?
Those guys are having fun.
I think we'd, I think we'd be looking at that probably more as an industrial use.
Okay, yeah.
Remember Dave, years ago, there was a huge dispute about a commercial operation at the end of Salter Street.
Yeah, all it had was a little bit of fiber left.
Commercial fishing boats, and the neighbors really unhappy.
And when you go to page two ten, you'll see that industrial occupancy includes commercial docks, marine railways, piers, wharfs, and marinas.
It has, I guess the point is, it has a dramatically different effect on the surrounding properties.
Probably, uh, and we do have a use for, uh, fishing boats, for a landing or something.
That's a, that's a separate use that's kind of described but not defined, yeah.
Yeah, that's where we were trying to draw the distinction between the industrial hauling of a boat to work on it and a fishing boat coming in to land in a marina, which was primarily pleasure.
It seems to be like there should be something here that says this does not include that. Something to set you somewhere else.
Once you start, okay, I guess you could in the definition, remember, once you start saying something or that, then you gotta say it everywhere.
Something to specifically incorporate non-pleasure.
Or maybe that perhaps we should lump marine craft definitions in one site, so you can get an idea of it, I don't.
Yeah.
But mostly aren't people hit to the definitions because they're reading some section and they say, what do they mean by a marina? And they go to the marina definition. I mean, these aren't gonna be this standalone thing.
Right.
You know, that have to be understood internally. They only make sense when you see the articles that go with them.
It's kind of hard without the articles.
Yeah, would you get going on those, Rick?
Tomorrow?
So where were, two eighteen?
Uh, I'm, I'm working on it. I think, I, I'm just sort of sliding ahead here. If there's anything, oh, page two twenty-two?
I like your statement.
We have a, uh, three things in a row for sustainability. It was hard to, it was hard to figure out how to, which was the primary word. So I just defined, I took a, a definition of sustainable development that, and, and made it as applicable to zoning as I could. And then just put the sustainability and sustainable in there, rather than redefining them as all over again. So just cross-referencing them. On page two twenty-three is an example of a definition that is not used in the existing ordinance, but I haven't got rid of it yet, truck stop.
Don't get rid of it!
But it's not in your ordinance.
Right, so we can't have somebody come in and ask for it.
Shouldn't you prohibit it? We'll argue that one later.
Yeah.
And on two twenty-four, we have a new definition for vernal pool, um, that is based on, um, proposed, uh, administrative rules at the state level. I don't think, don't think they've been adopted yet. They, they weren't adopted when I wrote this. And on page two twenty-five, I've kind of grouped a number of definitions of wetlands together.
Glad to see we now will finally really get into a veterinarian hospital. I suggest that we might want to keep a distinction on a vet hospital for small animals and large animals, since they do have different standards.
Rick, on, on the wetlands terms, do we, we use the term mitigation? Do we need to define wetlands mitigation?
I will, I will do so.
I mean, we should at least think about whether we need to. Cause that one sometimes is rather liberally used.
Also, Rick, um, the wetland buffer zone, all land within a hundred feet of an inland wetland, should that be jurisdictional inland wetland?
Because it's, if it's over half an acre, you mean, or whatever the.
But under a half acre, it doesn't have that hundred-foot buffer.
We should define jurisdictional, we should basically define jurisdictional inland wetland or something like that.
The wetlands ordinance, yeah.
I know term yard and the term setback are used synonymously. I don't see setback defined, so I guess yard is going to be the term used.
I thought we agreed on setback.
That's why, and that's, that's my question, whether if, if we do, then do you have to draw a cross-reference at yard to setback somehow? Tie, am I missing, am I missing something there? Cause I don't see setback here.
If we, if we, if we use setback in place of yard, we, we have some problems. We have to do some other language changes, because there are setbacks in the ordinance that are not yards. Uh, you know, you have, you have something that's setback from something else, and that's not a, it's not actually a yard, which is the minimum area between the lot line and the building. So, um, we, if we want to, we can switch all the yards and setbacks, but we're gonna have to do some other language changes there as well.
Yeah, my understanding was we were going to use it this way, yard meaning the required.
Yeah, the required.
Separation. And the setback was going to be for the other areas where we said we were going to be setback a certain amount.
We continue our internal haggling about that. You wouldn't believe how many hours of conversation we've already had about this particular issue. I learned that yards and setbacks are dangerous places to be.
Sort of like animals.
Yeah, don't get going on the animals.
Put them out in the yard.
Why don't you ask the question? Cause there's the answer, landscape design.
Zero escape.
Zero escape, hmm. Right alongside the, what was it, the reed?
Oh, yes, there. There's some other, some other definitions we're still thinking about.
The riparian zero escape.
So, so Rick, the intent is that people take these away, we take these away with us, we review them in depth, and you're gonna keep feeding us sections as you get them developed, and.
We'll have to put together some binders, uh, so that people can insert sections.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking about, doing three hole punch in a big fence, and then we can insert, and we can have those for the next meeting.
I've got a whole bunch of notebooks that we could even reuse.
I know, I was thinking that too. I've got a bunch to recycle too, so we won't have to spend any city money.
We'll sell them to you, Rick.
So we bring these back as needed.
Well, I was gonna ask about the, the review process. Is the review a section at a time? Or do we build it up and review more based on what Bob had said, that you kind of need to look at some of this in light of?
I think you could, I mean, I think you could, you could certainly, um, look at this, you know, on its own, and then come back with.
Start building up.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and, and there are certain sections, like the wetlands ordinance, the conservation commission has had at least half a dozen meetings with, with Peter and with Rick and David, and, and then HCC's had, what, three or four sessions on this? So those, those are well-covered, but.
But as, as Rick pointed out, this is.
Oh, right.
Where does it say, you know, where does it say we, uh, get a, you, you have to use your building permit within a year? So we've missed, we have missed things, even though they've looked at a number of times.
So I think the answer, councilor, is we're, we're kind of doing both.
Yeah.
Well, it's just that if we, I, I guess the question is if we start to see things that, you know.
I think, I think it would be good, helpful if you went through and marked things up and maybe not tried to feed them to us until we're, until we're, we go through the whole thing.
Okay, that's, that's exactly what I wanted to hear, or not.
Well said.
Or not.
While you're convalescing on the bank of a river.
Rolling on a ripper.
Zero escape? Huh? Is there a escape?
It is a zero escape.
And our next work session on these is gonna be, do we want to talk schedule, David?
Right, you have some dates you want to do?
Yeah, right now, we've scheduled out for April third. And we've scheduled out for May eighth and June fifth. But I'm assuming there may be some dates in between that we might want to do some more. And also, uh, we're going to be coming to you with the dates that the conservation commission is offering up as the combined meeting, uh, to go over the two, uh, wetland referrals that are coming our way. They didn't quite say that right, but if you remember Commerce Way wanted a meeting and also off of Roberts Avenue, Route One.
David, would you do those three dates again, April third?
Okay, right now, we've got April third, May eighth, and June fifth. And I think by the time we get with you next week, we'll fill in a few more.
Right, right. Why don't we plan on, you know, Rick and David and I will agree on dates when all are available and the meeting room is available, and then we'll send out a calendar for.
The next few months.
March, March, April, May, June, basically.
But these, those three dates are solid, right?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. And, and we're not gonna do anything before the regular meeting next week, right?
Correct.
And that's gonna be a really short meeting.
Yeah, so we may be, would be a good time to talk a little scheduling at the end of that.
Did you go, y'all?
I, I'm left unsatisfied with our conversation earlier about the lead thing. And I have a feeling it's a miscommunication between what I'm, what I'm understanding and what you're saying. Cause I don't often disagree with staff, and so I'm, I'm trying to figure out what it is.
We figured out we agreed.
On one thing. And I'm the only one that feels this way, I'll just take it and I'll, I'll, on my own, and I'll ask staff, you know, privately another time. But if other people have left, like, we don't really understand why we can't move forward with, um, more things. Can we schedule a time to talk about that? I mean, maybe not schedule time, but agree that we'll schedule time in the future.
You know what may happen too, as we begin to get into the meat of the ordinance, we may find the places that you're looking for.
Yeah, I don't think we should lose sight of that topic at all. I think obviously that's an important theme here in this whole deal, so.
Just, just for Chris's benefit, what we were talking about was.
Farm animals.
Oh, and that can be misinterpreted. The, the question came up about shouldn't the zoning ordinance specifically refer to lead certification? Or otherwise replicate some of what was in the green building Rockingham Commission report? And the answer was, well, lead is really a building code issue. It's not a zoning ordinance issue. And staff also advised us that the current site review regs as drafted would address that in large part. And so what Tony's saying is, I, I hear all of that, but I think I want this zoning ordinance to be more reflective of that concern.
I think the other component too was that sustainability would also be a way, another way into the same issue. And it was really that we were going to have to find a balance there. But the example might be that the white roof might not be a zoning requirement, but a site review could certainly take care of some of that, and I think we're gonna have to find the right mix.
Well, you know, not even having heard your conversation, even though I, I have figured out how to, I could listen for a little while to the web in my car.
That's scary. Driving at the same time you're listening.
I wasn't driving. If we're gonna, I mean, there will be no other issue that will be of greater interest, I think, in this to the public and the council when we start to have hearings and various interest groups that are rapidly forming in our community, than how these issues get reflected in zoning. And so we better get ahead of it and not wait to have two hundred people lined up at public hearing telling us what we should have done. I mean, and that may be what you were trying to do. I mean, and I, and I, I wanna, I wanna say one other thing in reflecting on, I was thinking about a lot of times, my comments around site review, you guys will say, oh, well, it's already in here. And I understand technically it's already in here, and I understand it's already in here when you already know it. But I really love our documents to be a little bit more communicative. And I think we have a ways to go on that with site review, because the whole idea is to give people messages, not just for our own internal legal protection. And I think maybe that's some of what you're talking about. So that, I, I think we need to go the mile, extra mile to figure out when we get all this done, what about not just lead, but the larger sustainability concepts? Cause I think if they're not really visible, um, we're gonna have a lot of rework to do to get these approved. I mean, I'm already being lobbied on this based on, you know, and we didn't even have this meeting. I already was lobbied by people last week on what's gonna be in here related to sustainability, and we hadn't even seen anything yet.
I've been lobbied by other city councilors.
Me too.
Asking me what we're putting in the planning, uh, documents.
So I, I think I would be really short-sighted not to, to just sort of assume that we think we know what it says.
Just for the public, say your number and see what happens.
Or just asking you what's in.
Believe me, I don't think they want to talk to me.
Just to make sure that when, when they see the new zoning ordinance, when they see our new site reviews, that the kinds of things that were in that document that gets sent to us, that people are excited about, um, we see. That we see that we are a leader, is what people are saying. What does it mean to be a hypocritical eco-municipality if you can't see this in our zoning ordinance when you can see it in Epping? And I think maybe if Epping hadn't gotten so far out ahead of people on this, we wouldn't be talking like this. But it's, it's coming from council members, and those are the people who are gonna, you know, we're gonna be looking for at least five votes. So, um, I, I think we need to pay a lot of attention.
You know, it may be that, um, is his name Mitch? Who's the guy from Epping, Cindy Dina? Clay, Clay, that's right. Clay Mitchell. Two names. That, that we can talk, maybe have him come and talk to us, I mean, because he, he actually has his own company now that.
Yeah, I've been thinking that too.
But, but just to frame it so that we have some sense. I mean, that's kind of what gets them going these days. And, and he will make himself available, I think, for us.
I saw him speak yesterday.
There you go.
Pretty animated.
I, I think, you know, from my perspective, we, we are ahead of the curve on this. We do, we are incorporating this everywhere in here, I, so I don't think we have much we need to worry about.
But to Councilor Dwyer's point.
Wait until we get some of the materials to look at. All you've got are the definitions.
That's, that's true. That's true. That's true. But, but to your point, and it, it is a little bit about marketing, although there's gotta be a better word for it, um, we've got to-
Education. Branding identity, whatever.
Messaging, that's good, thank you.
So we are.
Well, I feel better for bringing it up, thank you.
So, just to clarify then, our next meeting with Rick is gonna be on April third.
Correct.
True, and David, do we know what the CONCOM, is, is the, uh, March twenty-seventh a possibility at all for the joint?
We'll have it, uh, sometime tomorrow, so that we can work it out. My intention would be at the next planning board meeting, we have the schedule on the agenda, and we'll flesh it out and provide it to everybody.
So people should keep in mind that maybe March twenty-seventh-
Correct.
-would be a joint, that's all I'm trying to accomplish.
I know there's several April dates, I'm not sure of the March.
Okay.
Mr. Covial.
We never asked Rick, Rick, are you familiar? I mean, doesn't Mitch, um, Clay Mitchell, same, doesn't he do a lot of the same things you do?
I don't know the name at all.
Okay.
Clay Mitchell's a planner and a lawyer, and he specializes in green stuff.
I didn't know if Rick did that as well.
Yeah, he's-
I hope he doesn't come south of the border.
It does it all.
He's getting, I think, either a master's or a PhD in planning now at UNH, so he's, he's sort of augmenting his resume as we speak.
And what is it that Epping has done?
They, they have some mandatory green building.
Yeah, like the twenty-four-hour Walmart.
That's what I was gonna say, I mean, I thought, I thought, that's why I was confused.
They, they were very fortunate at the time that they adopted that, that they had a fish on the hook.
You could see it from thirty miles.
By my, I just heard the talk yesterday, they had a period of time where they were actually able to do some planning, uh, where we, I spent a lot of time doing site review, and, uh, I mean, getting a little bit of planning here, and they created, they, they wanted to do lead, but they saw it as being too cumbersome, so they created their own lead, and it was much more, uh, lead is after the fact, you gotta build everything and then go check it afterwards, which is hard on our end, but they had really easily identifiable things, and one was, uh, they had rain recovery, um, credit that you get, and it was really easy to go see, just make sure your gutter did not go into the stormwater system, you know, just made sure it go somewhere else, so that was one credit, simple things like that. Uh, they, they do, uh, much bigger things that isn't involved in the planning board, it's more city council things, with, with energy recovery and, uh, and green building systems, so, um, really innovative, it'd be a great talk for not only us, but the city council, the CONCOM, and the Sustainability Commission.
Well, and, and to that, I mean, I, I knew there was something I had to say, photovoltaic systems and alternative generation, um, I think, from a zoning perspective, need to be considered, because if I, as a single-family residence-type person, want to put a photovoltaic system on my roof, can I do that? What if I'm in the HDC? And, and so actually, there are some things that we, oh, thanks, Tony, um, that we ought to be considering from a zoning perspective, um.
And I, I think, and I think that the point you raised is probably the historic district is probably the place that's most, where you have the most difficulty in the zoning, I think probably the zoning doesn't affect you in other places, I would, I would suspect.
Because zoning is just height, I mean-
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't address exterior characteristics of the building?
Windmills?
Height, yeah, that would be a, if you wanted to-
If you're in the airport area.
Actually, in this area, windmill, windmill is the best generating power right now, not so much sun.
I, I guess what, these, these are just offered as examples, so what we're saying is, we need to anticipate, you know, what are a whole bunch of things that are looking forward, and then, do we allow for those things? Do we, are we friendly to them? Do we, not, not that we're silent on them and maybe you can do it and maybe you can't,